Am I giving this to someone?
Anybody who come to order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
With approval, a journal meeting November 1st, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Journal is approved. At this time, I move to suspend the rules for proclamation from County Executive Steve Stanger to present it to Wade Johnson of the Apprenticeship Training Department of Labor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. At this time, County Executive.
All right, great. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas St. Louis County recognizes that our economy demands an agile, world-class workforce with post-secondary education credentials and the ability to respond to immediate and future business and economic needs swiftly and proficiently, and whereas registered apprenticeship is an essential component of effective talent development strategies utilized in many thriving business sectors and has proven to be an exceptional path to attaining high-quality post-secondary education training and employment, and whereas registered apprenticeship flourishes in traditional industries such as construction and manufacturing, it is also highly compatible with efforts to meet workforce training and development needs in emerging industries such as healthcare and energy and is a proven leader in preparing American workers to compete in a global 21st century economy, including more than 12,300 registered apprentices currently in Missouri. And whereas the Office of Apprenticeship and the United States Department of Labor helps to establish registered apprenticeship programs in partnership with employers, business, and labor organizations, institutions of higher learning, and local and state governments to provide enhanced opportunities for workers seeking high-skilled, high-paying jobs and employers seeking to build a qualified workforce. And whereas apprentices who successfully graduate from registered apprenticeship programs promote economic vitality by enriching America's workforce with well-trained, competitive professionals equipped with United States Department of Labor certified occupational training and education credentials that are widely recognized both by employers and academic institutions. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Stanger, St. Louis County Executive, do hereby proclaim the week of November 14th through the 20th, 2016, as National Apprenticeship Week.
It will be presented to Wade Johnson and Andrea Jackson.
Would you like to say a few words?
Um, sure.
You're among friends here, I think.
Thank you. I realize I have three minutes or less, at least that's the instruction that Linda Henry gave me. And I'd like to thank County Executive Stanger for giving his blessing to this proclamation. For Linda Henry again for getting it done, to Vice Chair, or excuse me, Chair O'Mara O'Mara and Vice Chair Ms. Page and the entire County Council for this recognition. I just want to say that registered apprenticeship is a bipartisan, or is an issue, or a program that has bipartisan support both locally and nationally, and it's pretty much a no-brainer. Basically, we strive to train people in careers that will last a lifetime and in professions that have a high paying. And so with that, I just also want to add one more thing. I want to thank Ms. Andrea Jackson Jennings for meeting with my office and State Director Neil Perry and for our first discussion for how St. Louis County Human Services and, you know, how, what kind of a role you can play in this. And I'm enthusiastic and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
We'll move on to communication.
Mr. Chair, then our tax compromises is zoning matters, so we'll move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, 6th district.
Received file plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as requested and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Item number two, 7th district.
Received file plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost to be approved and the Director of Procurement to be authorized to advertise for bids as requested and a copy of this report to be sent to the interested parties.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Item number three, 1st district.
Received file.
To order.
Item number four, 6th district.
Received file plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending authorization from the Federal Highway Administration as requested and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair. Item number one, all districts.
Received file and refer to the council as the committee to hold the proposed budget be made available to the public from, and after this date, the council hold a public hearing on the proposed budget at a special meeting of the council to be scheduled as soon as the matter can be heard.
Good song.
That's bad.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
You have excellent taste in ringtones.
And the administrative director published notice of this hearing without any music being played at the meeting as required by law and that the proof of publication of notice be filed with the office of the county clerk.
Second.
And that will be the order. And the public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, November 15th, that's this evening, at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter as can be heard in the County Council Chamber, that's right here, 41 South Central, Platon Avenue, Missouri, 63105.
Item number two, all districts.
Received file, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Received file, the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number seven, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, all districts.
Received file and refer to the committee to hold, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, 6th district.
Received file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
To order.
Item number 10.
Received file, and that will be the order.
Item number 11, all districts.
Received file and refer to the council as the committee to hold, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, 6th district.
Received file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
To order.
Item number 13.
Same motion through item number 15, and that will be the order.
Item number 16, 3rd district.
Received file and a copy of this report be sent to the Parks Advisory Commission and to the St. Louis County Parks Foundation for review and comment.
To order.
Item number 17, 2nd district.
Received file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
To order.
Item number 18.
Same motion through item number 20, and that will be the order.
Item number 21, 6th district.
Received file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
To order. And there is no item number 22, there's a typo, so we'll move to 23. Received file and the county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. Same motion for item 23 and 24, and that will be the order. Add-ons, please.
Yes, sir, sorry. Add-ons, other communications, under zoning matters, item number one, 4th district.
I don't have anything marked down for... There we go. Received file and refer to the council as the committee to hold, administrative director be directed to schedule a public hearing on a redevelopment plan and project and qualifications analysis for the Jamestown Mall project area in accordance with section 99.430. Eight of the Missouri land clearance for redevelopment law and the county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Under other communications, item number one, 4th district.
Received file and refer to the council as the committee to hold, and I believe we're scheduled for December the 6th on that committee to hold, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 7th district.
Hold, please.
To order.
Item number three, 3rd district.
Received file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation and a copy of the report be sent to the Parks Advisory Commission and to the St. Louis County Parks Foundation for review and comment.
To order.
Item number four.
Received file and the county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Reporter to County Executive.
I have an issue I'd like to address.
Sure.
If I could in my report this evening. I wanted to thank all of you who came out from Chesterfield tonight to voice your concerns and suggestions with respect to Baxter Road. See you there, and I wanted to thank Bruce DeGroot for meeting with me earlier, councilman and state representative-elect. We met earlier, we talked about some of the issues, and we've really been talking about this issue now for a couple of weeks here in the county. Just to give you a little bit of perspective first, you know, we certainly added the bike lanes, really, when it's something that we hoped was in the best interest of the public, and certainly, there's of course no malice or anything along those lines, we were really trying to do what we thought was best. We've heard reports and concerns from your community, and those reports of concerns have been very well received, and we understand exactly where you're coming from. So what's been going on in the county is we have been talking with Mike Geisel from Chesterfield, and we're trying to work something out. In the event that we wouldn't be able to work something out, which I'm really confident that we're going to be able to work something out and have a very nice configuration on that road that works for everybody and hopefully everyone will be pleased with, if that wouldn't happen, we have a backup plan, which is to say, hey, for that section of, for that section of Baxter Road, we would be happy to provide that back to Chesterfield, and they could stripe it in any way that Chesterfield would want to stripe it, as a backup plan. But I think we're going to be able to work something out in the meantime, and I don't think that will be necessary. So that's really my status as to where that sits, and I conveyed that to Bruce earlier today, and I convey that to you now. So we greatly appreciate your concerns, very much so. I've heard multiple reports, and I understand where you're coming from. So that's sort of where we're headed with that issue right now.
Thank you, County Executive. Reporter to Special Committee.
Please drop from the floor.
To order. And I will move to public forum, we have several speakers. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address, first speaker.
First speaker this evening is Dawn Chapman.
Thank you. My name is Dawn Chapman. I live at 11909 Glenwood Drive, Maryland Heights, Missouri. For those of you that don't know, that's approximately a little less than two miles south of Westlake landfill. I know Councilman Page, County Executive Stanger, and I know Mr. Harder. Some of you are aware that there's new information that was released today concerning radioactive waste found in people's homes that live next to Westlake landfill, that's directly linked to the landfill. I want to tell you guys, they're finding it at 1,000 picocures per gram of thorium-230. To give you guys some perspective, the Army Corps of Engineers and EPA has to clean it up at 15 to 25 in soil, and these people are finding this at 11,000 in their kitchens? I mean, that's incredible. This, and I know many of you are aware of Coldwater Creek, you know, some backyards there are having some radioactive waste in it. The Army Corps of Engineers tells those people, you know, don't mess with this waste, don't touch it, don't do any landscaping, don't do anything with it, we'll get to it. What do you tell people that are finding it in their kitchen? What do you find, what do you tell people that are finding it in their homes? You know, we've been asking now for three years, these people have lived next to an underground fire, we've been asking for these people to be relocated, or at least offered the option, and at this point, I don't know what's left to say, you know? County Executive, you swore to us when you were running for office that you would be our biggest advocate, and you have not broken your promise, you have kept your promise, and you have been our strongest advocate to date, and we're asking for your help tonight. We need somebody to help us reach out to our governor, reach out to EPA, these people have got to be taken care of, they really do, and if you know us, you know that we've been to Washington, we've been to New York, we've been to the UN, we've been to the White House, we have gone to the ends of the earth. We have done everything the right way, and I'm asking that you guys help be our advocate here, we need some help from you, we need you guys to speak up on this issue. These people are really scared tonight, and they should be, and this is a 70-year-old problem, that is a fixable problem, but, you know, I don't know what else to say to you.
No, we understand. I have some of my very top staff members and team members, and you know, I know you've talked to them and you recognize them, they're here tonight, and I think what we should do is set up a meeting where we can get together in a very short timeframe and talk about an action plan.
Please.
And I encourage any of the council members who are interested to participate too as well.
That would be great.
And we'll figure out an action plan.
You guys have unanimously passed resolutions in this council, you guys have been our advocate, we know that. We just need you to be a little bit stronger, you know? The people whose homes, they're here tonight, and I got to tell you, Thanksgiving's next week, they're going to be making dinner in a kitchen that they just found 1,000 picocures of thorium-230 in. They're going to be having Christmas, what are they supposed to do? I mean, it's un-American, and it's, you know, just like what happened in Flint, we have to be their strongest advocate, and I know you've never broken a promise.
I agree.
I can say that, you have always been here, and we're just asking for a little more. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, and we will be.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dawn, how close to the landfill are these homes?
They're less than half a mile. There's only 92 homes that are right there, only 92 homes, and you know what? If they want to be allowed to live there, let them live there, but give them the option at this point. I know I'm over on time. Thank you.
Oh, you're fine.
No, it's not. I was just signaling to them to make sure they round with you, okay?
Next speaker.
I apologize for that. Next speaker is Robin Daly.
Good evening, Council. I am one of the residents that has the contamination from the Westlake landfill Manhattan project rad waste in their home. I moved there in 1999, I didn't know I was living and moving next to a radioactive superfund, had no idea. It's a big secret in St. Louis, they don't even allow you to disclose it, it's not necessary when you're buying a home. I didn't sign up to live next to one, and I sure as heck didn't want to be contaminated by one, because EPA and Republic Services said, there's nothing to worry about, we know where all the rad waste is, and we know exactly where it is offsite, and it's not where you're at. Well, guess what? The joke's on them. I'm contaminated now, and I want you to know that I have heavily landscaped my yard since 1999, my husband and I have dug holes almost two feet deep to plant trees and other things, so, I mean, we are really into it up to here with this stuff, and now it's in my house too, so I just can't get away from it. And on top of that, it was our worst fears realized, we, my husband and I had hoped we wouldn't be contaminated, but we always held in the back of our minds, there was always that possibility. Well, we've got irrefutable, indisputable proof, this isn't thorium that can be found in the United States, it has a Monzanite signature, which is a fingerprint, a DNA, that traces it all the way back to Shinkalo Hoi Mine in the Belgian Congo. Now, there's no way in H-E-L-L, I got that from anywhere but the Westlake landfill, because that cannot be had on these United States soil. So all I can say is, here's the face of contamination when we were constantly told not to worry about it. My government has failed me, the EPA has failed me. I look to the council, we have to start at the county level, my God, my own Bridgeton Council and my own mayor could really give two hoots about it. I've been shut down by the previous mayor, speaking about it at a council meeting. We're referred to as those people, those people up there that are bringing trouble into our neighborhood, stirring stuff up, giving Bridgeton a bad name, Bridgeton gave themselves a bad name. By continuing the silence, it creates the apathy, and it perpetuates the lie, and the lie continues, and the homes get sold, and the unsuspecting homeowners keep coming and coming and coming. Why, my house can't be remediated, you know why? Because the source of where it came from is still there, and it still has the rad waste in it. So what they going to do? Clean me up every couple of years? Clean my house? I don't need to go through that. I'm 61 years old, for crying out loud, I moved to Bridgeton to retire, and this is what I retired into. So that's my sad story. I'm looking for some help, I'm looking for more than, you know, we're really sorry, I know you're all sorry, and that is a genuine feeling, but I've heard enough of that, I feel like we're sorry, pet you on the fanny, send you on your way. But thank you very much for listening to me, we are a hurting community, not everybody wants to leave, but I do, at 3550 L. Farrell Court in Spanish Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Next speaker is Bob Nation. Mr. Nation will be followed by Bruce DeGru...
DeGroot.
Good evening, County Executive Stanger and members of the St. Louis County Council. My name is Bob Nation, I'm privileged to serve as the mayor of Chesterfield, and I'm honored to be here and see you face to face tonight. As the County Executive mentioned, it sounds like discussions, negotiations have been ongoing, and I'm very thankful and grateful for that, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to point out that for a long time now, the St. Louis County and the city of Chesterfield had an excellent working relationship, working on many projects and cooperation together, so obviously we look forward to that. So obviously, just to reiterate, I am here for two full purposes, one, to, you know, oppose the current or past re-striping plan, and also to state that we would be in opposition to the plan to turn Baxter Road back over to the city of Chesterfield. But I respectfully request and thank you for your reconsideration, and we have a number of people here from Chesterfield, probably fully half of the audience, we have Zach Wolf from our engineering staff is available to answer any questions, we have half of our city council, and a number of residents and trustees, former councilmembers, et cetera, so they're here for the same reason, and thank you so much for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, we appreciate your concerns, and I look forward to getting this worked out, and I think we will.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Bruce DeGroot, followed by James Mayer. Then James Mayer, followed by Peter Zazanhaus.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jim Meyer, and I get to serve as the alderman for the first ward of the city of Clarkson Valley, and I am here tonight representing Clarkson Valley and to express our opposition to the proposed changes to Baxter Road. While we support outdoor activities and bicycling, we believe this change will have a huge negative impact on Clarkson Valley. Certainly Baxter Road's a major artery, as we know, but we believe this will shift traffic into our neighborhoods and onto Curles Mill and Wilson Roads, and those roads are not prepared for additional traffic. Certainly Curles Mill has had some improvements, but most of that road is two-lane with no shoulders, and we think it's a bad idea, and going to pose a risk to our citizens, so we encourage you to continue the discussions, we thank you for your partnership, and thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Bruce is back here.
He's back in.
Come on up, Bruce.
Thank you. I apologize, I was talking to Chief Bellmeyer, he's a new constituent, he had a couple of suggestions for me.
That's all right. You didn't speak more than three minutes with him, did you?
That's a bad joke.
I was doing all the listening.
You're fine, take your time.
I was doing all the listening, believe me. My name is Bruce DeGroot, I'm on Chesterfield City Council, I live in Chesterfield, Missouri, 16814 Crystal Springs Drive. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. I do think, as County Executive Stanger indicated, I do think we're fast approaching a deal, I've got a lot of friends with me tonight, and I appreciate their support, every single one of them here lives off of Baxter Road and knows what this could have done. In my opinion, this is exactly how the county and municipalities should be getting along. The mayor has been instrumental in supporting this, I want to thank our staff, Mike Geisel, I want to thank Glenn Powers, I want to thank Mark Harder, I called him right away, he told us who to contact and what to do, and gosh, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much for listening, and I hope to get this resolved really quick.
Bruce, thank you for meeting with me earlier, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Peter Zazanhaus, followed by Jeannie Tavlin.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Peter Zazanhaus, and I live at 16625 Chesterfield Manor in a subdivision that borders on Baxter, and I was very happy to hear that the re-striping project is being reconsidered. I had done a traffic survey on Sunday and Monday, which agreed exactly, pretty well with what the county had done, and that the, it showed that the traffic volume on Baxter is greater than 18,000 vehicles per day, where the standard for a two-lane road is 16,000, and so the fact that it is being reconsidered, I appreciate very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Next speaker is Jeannie Tavlin, followed by Connie Foltz.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Tavlin, and I live at 16705 Chesterfield Farms Drive in Chesterfield, District 7, and I am opposed to the changes that you're planning to make on Baxter Road. But first, I want to say that I applaud your interest in making the roadway safer for cyclists. It's imperative that both cyclist and motorist travel as safe as possible, and I love the fact that cycling some places may be encouraged by some of these changes, as opposed to us just jumping in our cars and driving everywhere, it gives us an option. But I must say, I very strongly disagree with the manner in which the council went to impose these changes. Mr. Mark Harder spoke at our Chesterfield City Council meeting last week and said that the original plan was for the two outer lanes of Baxter Road to be shared by motorists and cyclists. It's a great idea, but then, okay.
Please keep your comments.
But then, without approval, the plans were changed to make the two outer lanes for cyclists only, and there was no input from the neighborhoods that were directly affected by these changes to Baxter Road, and that's why I'm speaking tonight. Like I mentioned earlier, I applaud any effort that encourages us to modify our habits, such as driving everywhere, to make changes so that we can support a more substantive, sustainable way of life. I believe with all my heart that it's vital for our survival for us to live a more sustainable way. Our habits need to change sooner rather than later in this direction. But that being said, none of us live in a bubble. In regards to eliminating two lanes on Baxter Road, the biggest concern is for the safety of everyone using the street. You have how many subdivisions that Baxter Road is their only access in and out of their subdivision? That will require people to use that middle turn lane, known in lots of other areas as a suicide lane, to make left-hand turns going both directions all day and all night long. It just is not safe. We don't want to move backwards and create a suicide lane on Baxter Road. In addition, you have people walking and running along Baxter Road every day, and sometimes they need to cross the street to get to where they live. You've just made it more dangerous for them to cross the street, because... You've just made it more dangerous for them to cross the street because the traffic will be concentrated in two lanes instead of spread out into the four lanes. In addition, if it's harder to walk, harder to cross the street, how can we encourage people to walk to places more often than get in their car and drive? There are lots of people that live close enough to the amphitheater, the Y, the library, that if it was a safe, if there was a safe way to get across Baxter and walk, they may be encouraged to do that as opposed to driving. Better for our environment. I want our city to be walk-friendly, bike-friendly. I want to give us options to change our habit of just hopping in the car and driving everywhere. But imposing-
Keep going. You were rudely interrupted. Go ahead. Keep going.
But imposing radical changes to our currently very busy street is not the way to go about it. You need to, you need input from people from all interests, I'm almost done, to find the best path to create these walkable, bike-friendly communities. And I just really encourage you to reconsider your plan. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next speaker is Connie Foltz, followed by Robert Kylo.
I'm gonna pass. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Connie.
Robert Kylo, followed by Paul Lee.
Hello, County Executive and County Council. Thank you for your time this evening and I applaud your efforts to collaborate with the city of Chesterfield on this change. I'm here representing a hundred and twenty-two homeowners with the estates at Baxter Point. Our trustees voted unanimously to reject the proposal to remove a vehicle lane in each direction. So, I'm gonna give up my time because it's great to hear there's going to be additional collaboration and that the lanes will still be vehicle lanes. I think that's in the safest interest for our neighborhood. Our neighborhood, just if you're not familiar with it, it exits onto Baxter Road. Across from it is August Hill, which is the artery that goes to, as someone just mentioned, the Chesterfield Amphitheater, the YMCA, Chesterfield Mall, the park, Central Park, and the Aquatic Center. Extremely busy. So, for us to leave on our Baxter exit, it's already somewhat dangerous because of the amount of traffic that goes in and out of August Hill, especially during summer, you know, pool hours, amphitheater hours, things of that nature. But to reduce a lane in each direction would make it much more dangerous. So, I applaud your efforts. Thank you very much and we appreciate keeping Baxter the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Next speaker is Paul Lee, followed by Dan Hurt.
My name is Paul Lee and I'm a trustee for the Chesterfield Lake subdivision. And I just want to echo the support you've already heard from everyone and I only have just one and it's not a traffic, I'm certainly not a traffic person or anything, but I'd really like to see bikers be able to do well. Is there any way you could do something on weekends, like Saturday and Sunday you have one configuration and the rest of the week, something else would accommodate more traffic? And thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Next speaker is Dan Hurt, followed by Tom Sullivan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy holidays to you all. My name's Dan Hurt. I'm on the Chesterfield City Council. My address is two-zero-three-five Emerald Crest Court. I've served the city for twenty-four years. First of all, I'm encouraged by what Mr. Stenger had to say earlier this evening and I am here on the subject of Baxter Road. And I just want to point out that as our mayor made comment to Mr. DeGroot, we have worked with the county for many years. I was elected in the very first city council, back when Mr. Rapko served and he was a county employee. He ran the airport. And it was a pleasure to serve with Dick and it was a really good cooperative effort through those years. And he helped a lot and mended a lot of it. So, the cooperation between the county and the city was there from the very beginning. And I want to just encourage that same cooperation and communication that we had through the years. I mean, that took us through some tough times and I just wanted to point that out. When we had the flood of ninety-three, I stood alongside county employees on the levee the night it broke. And then Dick worked with us to help rebuild the airport and so forth, which is your property or our property, I should say, because we're all citizens of the county and then, of course, of the city. So, I just want to point out that that cooperation went through some tough times through the flood of ninety-three and the personnel worked with us. Even Baxter didn't extend at that time, which is the subject of this particular situation, did not go down into the valley. And when I was the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee, when Mr. Brinkman and Mr. Sainert brought in Chesterfield Grove and we talked about taking Baxter down and with the cooperation of the county, we got the rideaway dedicated at no cost to the citizens and they gave it to us to do their project. And then Mr. Westfall at that time was kind enough to go ahead and connect the valley to the rest of our city. And he took it down there within just a couple of years. Again, that was cooperation between the city and the county to develop this whole area. And we were not, at that whole time, we were never oblivious to the fact that we had, that we agreed with the trail system. I think the county did too. So, we developed a master plan and we have that. It's been existing since the nineties. And along with that, we invested money in the levee trail when we rebuilt the levee. We invested money in the repairing trail going down there. And we encouraged the connection to Katy Trail going across the river. So, we agree with the concepts and I think the county and us were all on the same page. The strategy is the same. I think that the effort here is more of a tactical thing. How do we get there? How do we do that without being so conflicted on what everybody's trying to do? So, I would like to encourage the continued cooperation. Mr. Stenger's pointed out that he's working on it. It sounds like it's heading in the right direction and we're very happy to hear that. And we would like to encourage you to do that and to work with us on our master plan, our trail master plan, because obviously, we're investing in it also. So, please continue to work with us and at the end of that, I'd just like to thank you for the cooperation you've given us in the past and hopefully, we'll continue to have in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan, thank you. And I think what you'll find is that our respective staffs are working together on this and I think they're gonna come up with a really creative solution to all this. I think we're all on the same page with what our objectives are.
If the vast is any example, Mr. Stenger, I believe you're correct.
Yeah.
I believe we're working with some really good people.
Yeah.
In fact, in all the years I've served, I've never had to come up here and express it because the staffs have usually always worked it out.
Yeah.
We never had to do that.
I think we'll have it.
Okay, good. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a few things to mention. First, I'm glad that Ernie Trakus was elected to the county council, as a county council member from the sixth district. I think he will do a good job for the people of South County. With new members of the council coming on, I would hope someone other than Councilman Page, the council vice chair, be selected as chairman next year. Councilman Page does not believe in open government. When he was once acting chair, he limited speakers to one minute. He showed his contempt both for citizens and the democratic process. For two years, the chair has been a supporter of the county executive. It's time for a change. I'm again questioning the contract with Brown Smith Wallace for up two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars to audit the county health department for compliance with HIPAA regulations, which is on tonight's agenda. It has to be wondered why everything about this is being covered up by Dr. Faisal Khan, county's health director. Questions still persist about the audit contract. Why did only seven firms respond to the request for proposals? How wide was the RFP distributed? Who was on the committee that selected Brown Smith Wallace? This is the third audit contract with the firm since Steve Stenger has been county executive. Were things designed so the firm could get the contract? Where did the not-to-exceed cost of one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars come from? No one knows. There's no reason why Dr. Khan cannot come before the council and answer these questions. Until more is known about the proposed audit contract, it should not be approved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. We need to go back to other communications that number twenty-two was actually on the original agenda. It just somehow failed to get onto our final agenda. So, it was a receiving file, which was a monthly report from the Bay State Development Agency. So, receiving file on that would be the order. Move on to introduction of bills.
Bill number two-fifty-seven introduced by Councilmember O'Meara and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a donation of up to seven thousand dollars from Enterprise Holdings with full-frame initiative, five domains of well-being training for the family court, appropriating the donation for support of said training and authorizing the county executive to execute the necessary documents. Bill number two-fifty-eight introduced by Councilmember O'Meara and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. The Missouri Secretary of State appropriating the same for support of various election expenditures and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number two-fifty-nine introduced by Councilmember O'Meara and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to four-hundred-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars to the Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, appropriating the same for acquisition of a system enabling locating of gunfire in the Castle Point area for use by the police department and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number two-sixty introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a utility agreement with Missouri American Water Company for the relocation and adjustment of utility facilities in connection with the improvement of Lackland Road Bridge, number two-seventeen A R dash twelve-eight-four. Bill number two-sixty-one introduced by Councilmember O'Meara and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty by repealing and reenacting section one pertaining to grants totaling up to five million four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-thirty-six dollars to Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development for supportive programs and services related to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Bill number two-sixty-two introduced by Councilmember O'Leary and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Metropolitan Park and Recreation District for construction, operation, and maintenance of a portion of the River to Pair Greenway. Bill number two-sixty-three introduced by Councilmember Dolan and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Shea Roofing Incorporated for repairs to the roof of the Roost Administration Building, St. Louis County Public Works, number sixteen dash zero-zero-eight dash O C. Bill number two-sixty-four introduced by Councilmember O'Meara and ordinance amending title two, chapter two oh four, St. Louis County Board of Revised Ordinance since nineteen-seventy-four, is amended the retirement plans by repealing and reenacting sections two oh four point oh nine oh and two oh four point two seven oh pertaining to the same subject. Bill number two-sixty-five introduced by Councilmember O'Meara and ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in the county of St. Louis on the fourth day of April two thousand seventeen for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of St. Louis County a proposal to impose a county-wide sales tax of one-half of one percent for the purpose of providing funds for public safety in addition to all other sales tax presently levied and imposing said sales tax conditional upon approval of the proposal. Bill number two-sixty-six introduced by Councilmember O'Meara and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Tinsley's Local six-ten pertaining to collective bargaining rights of certain employees. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Correction of bills.
Bill number two-fifty-four introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up. Move for perfection of bill number two-fifty-four. Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Motion carries. Bill number two-fifty-four is perfected.
Bill number two-fifty-five introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number two-fifty-five.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Motion carries. Bill number two-fifty-five is perfected.
Bill number two-fifty-six introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number two-fifty-six.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Motion carries. Bill number two-fifty-six is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number one-sixteen introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold number one-sixteen.
And that will be the order.
Bill number two-forty-nine introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up. Move for final passage, bill number two-forty-nine. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number two-forty-nine, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-forty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number two-fifty introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up. Move for final passage, bill number two-fifty. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number two-fifty, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-fifty is finally passed.
Bill number two-fifty-one introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move for final passage, bill number two-fifty. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number two-fifty-one, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-fifty-one is finally passed.
Bill number two-fifty-two introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up. Move for final passage, bill number two-fifty-two. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder. Mr. Chair, on bill number two-fifty-two, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-fifty-two is finally passed.
Bill number two-fifty-three introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up. Move for final passage, bill number two-fifty-three. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number two-fifty-three, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number two-fifty-three is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair. We have one this evening. Resolution number one introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I move for adoption of resolution number one. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are six ayes and one absent.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair. Item number one, fourth district.
Hold on the order business and that will be the order.
And moving on to new business, we have three prepared orders this evening.
Would that be under new business or?
I think that should be under unfinished business, Mr. Chair. It was held on a prior agenda.
We had two appointments to the police commission. We'll do it one by one. First one was Mark Gertner. I move for appointment of Mark Gertner to the St. Louis County Police Commission. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Motion carries. And the second appointment will be Mr. Arthur Johnson to the St. Louis County Police Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Motion carries.
I'll abstain, Mr. Chair.
From both appointments, or the first?
No, from the second.
Okay, where we at now?
And under new business, Mr. Chair, we have three prepared orders.
I move for adoptions of orders one, two, and three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Motion carries. Orders one, two, and three are adopted. And order three is, we will be moving our meetings to three P M. next Tuesday instead of six P M. Orders one, two, and three are adopted.
We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it. Motion carries. We are adjourned and we're going- Public hearing six-thirty P M. Regarding the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget, November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, here. Councilmember O'Meara, here. Councilmember Dolan, here. Councilmember O'Leary, here. Councilmember Harder, here. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
In accordance with Article eight, section eight point zero-three-zero of the St. Louis County Charter, the council is required to hold a public hearing to receive comments from all interested persons who wish to speak on the recommended two thousand seventeen fiscal year budget for St. Louis County. At this time, we have two speakers, I believe. First speaker.
Kevin Wyndham.
Can we keep our comments to three minutes, please?
Hello, my name is Kevin Wyndham. I reside at two-zero-six-zero Victory Way Lane, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-three-eight. Thank you to the council members for having me. I'm just trying to understand how, as I see it, there's been a million dollars taken from the health budget for next fiscal year after we just heard the ladies who spoke about West Lake Landfield and how there's been empirical studies of cancer clusters, et cetera, in the St. Louis County area. I myself actually attended McClure North High School where they have a senior class, an honor senior class, actually, that goes out to St. Ferdinand Shrine and digs. That is right next to the watershed of Coldwater Creek. Excuse me. So, there are students every year, year after year, digging in the watershed right next to Coldwater Creek, which has also been found to have radioactive materials in it. So, there are people that do know about the radioactive contamination, but there are many people, including children-